Planning Commission of Bloomfield Township to order for the October 19th, 2022 meeting. Before we start, I just want to read a little information, anybody watching on cable, or there's nobody here, but if anybody watching on cable. This is the Planning Commission is a seven-member board. It's appointed by the Township Board of Trustees for the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. And the Planning Commission is a recommending body only. What we vote on here, what we decide to do gets passed on to the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees for a final decision. This, we look at matters involving site plans and land use, et cetera. Tonight, we have only one item on the agenda. It's a discussion of the five-year review of the master plan. We're required every five years to review it and either make changes or send it on to the Board of Trustees rather to make changes. In order to do that, anything, we need a vote of four members. We have five tonight, so we have a quorum, but we need a vote of four members, four of the seven, the majority of the seven. So anyway, that's what we're here for, that's what we'll do. So the first thing we want to do is approve the minutes of the June 20th meeting? Really?
October 3rd.
No, it was October.
October 3rd.
My screen here shows.
That was October.
Approval of minutes, okay. Well, it's approval of minutes of the last meeting. We just met in October, so those meetings, I read that they weren't June 20th. So you've had those, you've got those in your packet. Does anybody have any comments, any questions, any corrections?
No.
Then all's in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Now, on to the matter of the master plan. Patty, are you going to do that?
Yes.
Okay, Patty.
So in your packet, there's a cover memo that was prepared that explains to the Planning Commission your role as established by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act whereby the township has a master plan update. The reason why it's referred to as the master plan update because at the time in 2007, when we were considering the process of going through a review, it was determined that we have a 1991 master plan, and it was time really to update the goals and vision and ideals, if you will, of the township in a new master plan document. And that's the one that we refer to anytime we have a site plan or rezoning, a discussion. It's the master plan update of 2007, which is our current document that we reference as we have any improvements in the township. And not necessarily improvements, but also policies and procedures and so forth. So as the master plan is a long-term, long-range study looking to guide the community in making decisions, it's a guide. It does not have any legal standing other than for the fact that it's been a process that's been followed through the state enabling act, but it doesn't have any immediate authority. The authority comes from what the board, the township board has then enacted, and that is the zoning map and the zoning ordinance. And so the zoning ordinance and zoning map support the recommendations of the master As Mr. Salz indicated, the state act also requires a five-year review. The intention is to identify what those goals are, see if they're current, have there been any changes since the last review, which was back in 2018, and then to forward on a recommendation from the Planning Commission to the township board. And I'd like to include, and I have over the last four other meetings, three other meetings, when the Planning Commission was charged with this project, and it was pretty extensive, we hired a consultant, it was a good nine-to-12-month process, engaged the residents and stakeholders to participate in various topics and group meetings, but we felt that it was important to have a mission statement. And so the Planning Commission established this mission statement by saying, "Bloomfield Township will remain a premier residential community, offering its citizens pristine water features and woodlands, exceptional educational opportunities, exemplary municipal services, and a vibrant, diverse, and upscale business community. Bloomfield Township will remain Michigan's most desirable community in which to live." And I think the township has upheld that very, very high standard, clearly by the actions that this board has taken in your recommendations to the township board. So specifically, I tried to break down for the board's benefit what we're principally looking at when we want to conduct a five-year review. And the first is the question, have there been major changes in the community not anticipated in the current master plan? And I'd just comment that, you know, as we are aware, you know, there have been some infrastructure improvements throughout the township, whether it's utility or whether it's road, and we know that in some respects, we are that municipality or that jurisdiction when it comes to utilities, water mains, so forth. But sometimes it also requires, or it also involves other jurisdictions. So we are aware that the township doesn't have any responsibility of roads. That actually falls within the Road Commission of Oakland County or Michigan Department of Transportation, or MDOT. But we have, over the last five years, been seeing some improvements, principally maintenance, and it's just the nature of our aged community. You know, we have to maintain, you know, our services, maintain our utilities, and so we've seen those occur over the last five years or so. Bobby, one of the most significant, or apparent, if you will, because oftentimes anything that's underground, you know, it's much like a roof sometimes. When you re-roof, you don't really have appreciation of that. But what was something that we could look at and point to, and I think we're seeing the benefit of it after a couple of years now, is when we were part of the MDOT modernization program, where it started from Eight Mile Road and went all the way farther north. And for Bloomfield Township, and we were actually one of the first phases of that improvement, the biggest interchange improvement was Square Lake Road, changing the direction of traffic and the merging from the service, from the ramp, obviously, to I-75. That was a huge, huge undertaking. And then the result in landscaping and some aesthetic qualities that were part of that proposal. So we have seen, you know, something much more significant than just the utility work that I was referring to. And then in 2018, we did have a master plan amendment, and so I provided to you a link to our website. And, you know, you recall, you know, that was a plan that was a result of getting a proposal from the property owners at the corner of South Boulevard and Squirrel, wanting to do something with that property that wasn't in concert with the zoning ordinance, zoning map, and the master plan. And so they approached the township board and requested a sub-area plan, as we refer to it, and a specific area plan. And we then engaged in a master plan process, you know, for that area. That was executed over a 12- to 14-month timeframe. And then the result of it was, again, that zoning map being changed to support that master plan recommendation, and then ultimately, there was then a site plan review and approval, and now, you know, underway, we have a multi-use development project, you know, underway at that corner. And then the last reference, just kind of going back in years, is, as we know, that Redeco purchased the rights of the former Bloomfield Park project on North Telegraph, north of Square Lake, now referred to as the Village of Bloomfield. They have completed their final building component, if you will, of that master planned project. And that's a unique proposal, as you remember, because it involves an agreement between Pontiac, Oakland County, and then ourselves. And they're actually established a governing body where there's three individuals representing those three entities that will govern any changes, improvements, and so forth, running with that land as we go forward. There's no significant improvements planned to date. We anticipate anytime there might be a minor modification or signage, you know, we'll see those improvements coming through as a request for review by that Joint Development Council, that's the name of that body. But overall, they have met and completed their intentions with that overall project. The second question that comes up is relating to, you know, is there any instances where the Planning Commission departed from their master plan? And I just refer to, anytime you'll see a report coming from Andrea or myself having to do with a site plan application or special land use proposal or rezoning, that we always refer to how it complies with the master plan. And I'd like to, you know, share a comment that I had, that I received from Bill Hampton, our former township attorney, who was very steadfast in the value of a master plan for a community. And that by a community upholding stringently the goals and objectives of the master plan as it relates to enforcing their zoning ordinance, that that is the strongest condition and position that you can ever establish a municipality to defend, you know, your goals and objectives. And I think, you know, the board can be very proud to know that we have done just that. Anytime that we go forward with any proposals, it's always a reference to the master plan. And if it's not, then we undertake a master plan amendment. And over the last, you know, 15 years, there's only been one such amendment that was a result of a directive from the township board to proceed, and that was at Squirrel and South Boulevard. So the Planning Commission has been very, very strict in enforcing, you know, the goals of the master plan as it relates to projects that have been coming before you. And just going over the last five years, because this is our five-year review, we've had three rezoning and site plan requests. And just to jog your memory, the, other than the project at South Boulevard and Squirrel, which included one of them, the other was a office building on North Telegraph at Crestview. It was a two-story office building just north of roadside restaurant. That office building unfortunately was not developed for whatever reasons the property owner had, but that property was rezoned from ML to B3, and that was consistent with the master plan. The Valvoline, I think we remember the Valvoline project, that was rezoned from B2 to B3, consistent with the master plan. And then although the board didn't take action, and actually, it turned out that it was withdrawn later, but on North Telegraph, just north of Square Lake, when Evola Music was partnering with the Calabats for an office building, and at one point, they wanted to rezone that property, and then with concerns raised by the Planning Commission and the public, they end up withdrawing that rezoning and then sustained their B1 zoning classification. So even over those last five years, we've had very little opportunity to consider any zoning map changes, again, being consistent with that master plan recommendation. And then lastly, are the goals and policies set out on the plan still relevant? And to that point, we have engaged our departments, who are identified in the various implementation schedules that are found in the master plan reports, both of them actually, and asked each of the departments to update their comments, bring it up to current 2022 standards as it relates to those goals that are found in any of those chapters. And the chapters are relevant, and these implementation schedules are relevant to the goals at the time, but also going forward. And, pardon me, as we know, there could be some legislation, there could be some concerns raised by residents, there could be new, you know, funding opportunities that have been presented to the township or we've been aware of, which has led to maybe some further modifications or further changes or enactments, if you will, to meet some of that criteria that's called out in the implementation schedules. And they're broken down essentially between short-term, midterm, and long-term. Again, this is a 20-year plan, so there are some things, when we engaged in this effort back in 2007, that were found to be more immediate, and we were pretty aggressive in addressing, you know, some of those goals. And then there's the midterm and then the long-term that are kind of spelled out also in these schedules, and ongoing. And I think much of what you'll see in these action items could very well be considered ongoing, because there is a responsibility that the various departments have to, you know, maintain their, the objectives that they have individually with the departments, the state and federal laws that we are obligated to comply with, and then new and innovative ways to try to put forth information to the public. And I think most recently, we can, you know, see how information on our website, information through various social media is now a dimension that really wasn't considered in 2007, but now it is. And so that's why this is a little bit more contemporary in a response as opposed to some of the earlier. But just to highlight, because I, these are multiple pages, and I know you've all had an opportunity to review them, but just to call out a few comments, you know, as we know, there has been, over the last several years, ordinance amendments that we have brought before you, where we have found, or maybe it's been brought to our attention that we need to amend our zoning ordinance because there's some outdated references or information, you know. So, you know, for example, we didn't have a basketball pole or play equipment ordinance provision. We were addressing it more on a case-by-case basis, but we presented to the Planning Commission an ordinance amendment, presented illustrations, and we found that that's been very successful, and the township board obviously adopted it. And that's been a way that we've been hearing comments, making the zoning ordinance much more relevant to the issues at hand. Another example is the outdoor living space. Andrea presented to you a proposal where you could encroach into the setbacks in the front and the rear by a living area or a usable space, and not necessarily having to go to the zoning board of appeals every time you wanted to have a kitchenette, or you wanted to, you know, have some patio features immediately adjacent to your home. And again, you know, that was because we were finding that having to have those elements go before the zoning board of appeals was really not consistent with really the nature of what the community was asking over several years of analysis. And I think, just lastly on that first section, and I'm referring to the future land use, just the general section, is the whole topic about, you know, opportunities for public parks, and we have seen more recently, over the last five or so years, where we've had residential planned unit developments come before the township. The school has sold property to developers, so we've had places like Baron Estates and Wing Lake and Villas at Bloomfield Grove all have our founding from school property. And in those PUD regulations, there's always a standard relating to open space or recreational space accessible to the residents. And so even though it's a private requirement, it's still providing a park opportunity, sometimes passive or not, recreation opportunity, or green space generally into our developments, but it's not necessarily that public park, which is really a separate dynamic when you're referring to open space. You know, we do have school districts that have playground areas and park areas, and we have certainly a number of golf courses that provides that recreation, but we don't have any township-owned property that's a public park. And I would, I could say that that probably is something that is going to be pursued in the next master plan. And really, at that point, it's something much more focused and featured as a topic, because if there is going to be an interest in actual acquisition of land, then what to do with that land? And that's the value of having those public input, public forums, to ultimately then, you know, create a Parks and Rec plan. So it's still there, it's very important. I think it's a topic that we're going to be hearing about, you know, going forward, but I think it's very relevant to when, you know, the master plan is under, the next wave of an update that occurs in 2026, 2027. But again, at the end of the day, it's acquiring that property. When it comes to housing, I think we have all experienced over the last several years, there's been a real reinvestment in the, in residential properties, or actually, properties as a whole. We can account, the three of us can account, to the fact that we are extremely busy and have been for the last several years, part of it having to do with COVID, part of it also the economic diversity of the township. And so we have that reinvestment of the residential, our residential housing, whether it's tear-down and build-new or substantial renovation, but the, there is a reinvestment occurring in the township. That's something that we were very fortunate to see. And to that end, and I know Jeff will comment, that, you know, sometimes that does result then from, you know, having to look at what our standards are. And, you know, because of our discussions that we had here, even though it wasn't an ordinance amendment, we ended up establishing a new driveway permit standards, so that when we have driveway, we have a new home that comes into a community, or we have a house that wants to build a brand-new driveway, that they actually have to submit for a driveway permit, and we look at water runoff and stormwater runoff, and, you know, what is our natural water courses, and, you know, the fact that we can't drain on someone else's property and those negative impacts. So we have seen examples where it's been necessary to look a little bit more deeper in, you know, what is occurring now, and finding that there are some modifications and changes. So even if it's not a zoning ordinance amendment or a rezoning, but it's an operational modification, and clearly, we did that with that policy. The next chapter speaks to natural features. We continue to very vigorously defend, uphold, review our woodlands and our wetlands in the township. Engineering and Environmental Services is a key department when it comes to this area, in concert with the Planning, Building, and Ordinance Department. They have been very active in maintaining and keeping current with any of the changes that have occurred as it relates to standards that are coming out of Eagle, as we refer to it now, or any other federal standards. They, you know, something such as, you know, how to address, you know, some of, you know, the invasive species, you know, they're staying current through their networking. And in some cases, it's involving different agencies outside the township, but they have been very active in maintaining that responsibility, and that's shared with the Planning Commission anytime we have a review where there may be an impact to a wetland, you know, or an intrusion into the natural feature setback, you're made aware of it. And in fact, we've actually had some instances where you've had to put your other hats on and now had to serve as the wetland board because of some past projects. So again, that is staying as a top priority with the township. The next group, or next chapter, if you will, is Local Economy and Marketplace. And these recommendations are pretty much either ongoing, or we are still, you know, looking to make some improvements just as there's new activity that may occur. You know, we meet with developers or property owners at every opportunity when there's a interest to improve a piece of property. It's a policy that our department has, and Wade and Andrea actively set up meetings, will pull in other staffers from different departments so that we have an opportunity to meet with property owners ahead of time. There is a lot of responsibility, if you will, of that property owner being made aware of all those requirements and conditions of approval as they go forward, because it oftentimes means that they are engaging in professional services as well to go forward with any sort of improvement on property. And so that behind-the-scenes review, and I know we've shared that with you before, there's numerous meetings that occur before you ever even see, you know, a site plan. That's because of, you know, these recommendations to, you know, meet with those respective property owners or developers, so that it's very comprehensive by the time you see a proposal that we've tried to, you know, dot all the i's and cross all the t's, and at the same time, we're educating. We're educating that applicant, their consulting services, and then obviously you, as we present, you know, that proposal for a recommendation onto the township board. The, you know, as a broad example, you know, much of the development that we're seeing is redevelopment. We have very few parcels that have never been developed or haven't been tied to some sort of approval, whether it was because of acreage that's required for, you know, compliance with an ordinance, or because of maybe the condition of the property. And the only one that Andrew and I have been talking about and kind of been keeping current with the property owner is a parcel that's on North Franklin, at the northeast portion of Franklin Road, as it abuts the city of Pontiac. Way back in the day, it was approved as a research park development, where there'd been 18 lots, if you will, with the potential of a R&amp;D park. And then the economy, you know, kind of hit in 2007, 2008, so that never came to be. So that property still is a developable parcel, and every once in a while, same property owner, too, we get a call from Mr. Patrick Ray, and he, you know, throws out a suggestion or an idea, or wants to know, you know, discuss a concept plan. And so we're pretty confident that in our lifetime, we will see an application come our way with that property. It has a lot of, it's 18 acres, it has a lot of depth, so it's narrow, but it's deep, and it goes back to the subdivision that is accessible from Woodward, and I can't remember the name of the.
I don't know the name of the subdivision, it's the Berkshire, North Berkshire.
Yes, yes, yes. And so, you know, that is a project that, or a piece of property that, you know, we're hoping that we'll be able to present to you someday with a viable project. And I know the owner would love to see that, too. But other than that, we really don't have a lot of vacant property. It's more redevelopment opportunities. And we, you have probably half a dozen right now that the three of us are working on at one stage or another, and because of just circumstances with staffing, whether staffing or financing or just scheduling, it hasn't presented itself to a point where we can, you know, schedule a meeting, a site plan meeting for you, with you, but they're coming. Probably sooner than later. The, just touching on the transportation section, I think I already spoke to the fact that we don't have any responsibility for our road system, so we work really closely with the Road Commission and MDOT. And we also have our Safety Path Program. So, you know, you talk about the various modes of transportation, you know, the township tries to achieve, you know, that through either our own programs or those that we have a very active affiliation with, with our other agencies. And I did ask, and this is a nice feature, having to address our senior services, when we talk about transportation, it's not necessarily, you know, our road systems or our pathways, but it also is what kind of services, public services can we offer to our residents? And that's one of the numerous benefits and features, services that these, our center offers to the township. And back in 2017, they provided nearly 7,000 rides to medical appointments, errands, and to the senior center for classes and activities. And they weren't able to provide me with an updated number, but, you know, those type of services are still available, and if you go on our website, you can see. And if you go on our website, you can see that there are some transportation services that are afforded to our residents. Sometimes there's conditions and sometimes not. But that's, and we're very fortunate to have such a program in the township. The last section is community facilities. Again, we have had a number of ordinances that we've adopted. And this was a unique area that we've had an opportunity to speak to, and that had to do with the small cell ordinance. If you remember, right now, we have a lot of these cell towers that are in the township, good 175, 200 feet tall. And then the small cell group came in over the last five years or so, and saying, "We can do something different than putting big cell towers. We can have smaller cell speak to each other through intermittent locations, and what can that look like?" And so that led to some state legislation that we then had to enforce and mirror. And so we presented to you ordinance 667 and 668, establishing small cell ordinances and implementation permit process. And Andrea leads that through our department, in concert with the Engineering Department, Engineering Environmental Service Department, to make sure that as these proposals come before the community, that they are adhering to those standards. And in some respects, it could be underground, or they could be, which is a different permitting process, or they could be actually on these intermittent locations. But that was a response to something that was actually occurring most recently over the last several years. And we do talk about programs, not just what we're more familiar with when we prepare reports, we pull in our assessing department, DPW Engineering, obviously the various factions of the Planning, Building, and Ordinance Department. But there's also police and fire that we reach out to, and they make significant contributions to some of the goals of the master plan as it relates to their individual programs. Clearly, the police and fire do much more than their enforcement, if you will, activities, or their life-saving activities. But they have a lot of public programs, whether it's through the schools or through other agencies. And they also have some liaison with the senior services as well. So we do have community programs, that's in addition to, when we talk about development and our land uses. And then just having an active community relations program, or a department, if you will, in the township. We have a new director, and Carrie is very active in wanting to gather information about the township, putting out the best information possible about the township as it relates to a particular topic. She's featured departments, she's featured programs. And so if you've had a moment, or when you have a moment to go onto our website and click on some of our social media, much of what you're seeing most recently is coming from the work that Carrie is doing. And that's still very important. Education information is probably an underlying message throughout this master plan, because it's only as good as people are aware of what our goals and objectives are, and our long-term plans are for the community. And just finally, we are very blessed, if you want to refer to it, as that, by having a very active residential community. We have neighborhood associations that take their role very seriously, and participate in our planning process, our zoning board of appeals process. We reach out to them as it comes to, as it relates to our building permit applications, and wanting to make sure that when we're noticing, that we're also noticing those homeowners associations, in addition to individuals that are falling within our 500-foot radius. But that homeowners association relationship certainly, I think, has strengthened over the years. We've become much more communicative with those leaders of those homeowners groups. We ask them to keep us informed of who are those representatives, so we can reach out and send notices as needed. Now, that's their responsibility to keep a current list with our clerk's office, but that's the list that we use. So when we do have a notice, we send it out to those homeowners. We always have feedback, we always request feedback from their HOAs on our applications. Our forms say, "Have you, do you have any comments from your association?" Our doing business in Bloomfield and our residential permitting process all refers to, "Your first stop should be your HOA. Find out what your deed restrictions are, find out what your procedures are." And then we will mesh those with our municipal permitting process or approval process, because we can enforce deed restrictions. But we certainly want to share that information and push that information as needed back to the residents. And as much as we can keep our homeowners groups informed, that's been a big benefit, especially through our ordinance division, where our lead ordinance officer has been meeting with various presidents or chairs of the various groups and homeowners associations -- excuse me -- that reach out to Chris to ask about some enforcement, or get some information, or any information that they could share maybe at an upcoming association board meeting. So again, that information and communication is very critical. And I think we've been doing a really good job. But based on the feedback we've been getting from our association groups, that we're staying connected, we're staying reachable and accessible, and then clearly doing our part, and then also trying to help them as well, because that role is a little bit different than what the township has. So that is a very brief, but winded synopsis of our reports. I didn't touch on specifically the area plan for Squirrel and South Boulevard, because much of the value of that master plan update was pulling those recommendations from the master plan as well, to be consistent. Much more specialized, obviously, because of that particular neighborhood and that general area. But the goals and objectives are the same. And so much of what I was speaking of could be mirrored with that South Boulevard and Squirrel area. So with that, I know I asked Andrea and Wade if there's anything that they would like to add to, or certainly, we all are available to answer any questions you may have, or contribute to any conversation that you might want to start.
Okay, anybody have any questions or any comments?
Just a clarification, and you said we're using the 2007 plan? But when you update it every five years, is it still the same plan considered updated?
It's not, the master plan update was a term of art, if you will, because at the time, we wanted to inform the public that this was an update from 1991. So that the master plan of 2007 is the master plan that we have been reviewing every five years. It has not changed, other than in 2018, for that one sub-area plan that was right at the corner, South Boulevard and Squirrel.
So we're kind of operating under the 2007
Correct, correct. And that's what we're asking the Planning Commission to review with us, and to forward on to the township board. And as a guide, I offered the three areas. One is to accept the five-year review of the master plan update, to confirm whether after five years, the goals, objectives, and strategies are still relevant. And then lastly, that the principles of the plan are still pertinent with the state of the township.
So when there's along the way text amendments to the ordinance, or minor things here, I think we did one for tobacco, and
Yes, very good.
That's considered within the spirit of the master plan, because the ordinance and the zoning map is designed to be in conformance with the master plan. So those changes don't affect the master plan. As a matter of fact, they should be considered within the spirit of the master plan.
That's exactly it. Very well said.
So do we ever have a similar meeting whereby we talk about things that maybe that could be introduced? I'll give you an example. It happened to me at the Squirrel Lake and Telegraph. I had a, and this is just an example of how would somebody introduce an amendment or a minor adjustment to the ordinance. We wanted to put a tenant that had a pickup window, because after COVID, people didn't want to go in and touch things, and it wasn't convenient to bring everything out to somebody's car. But yet, our ordinance didn't treat that. If you wanted a pickup window, it had to be considered as a drive-through, because there was no separate language to... So if that, and that's just an example. I mean, it could be other things that I'm not thinking of. How would those get introduced? When somebody asks for something? Or do we ever sit and say, "Hey, it's time to adjust this, because there's a new condition that didn't exist before"? I mean
Just as you said. And that's really apart from the master plan. A master plan is in generalities, broad scope, broad horizon, objectives. The zoning ordinance is the day-to-day enforcement of those goals and objectives, and things such as a detail of the parking requirements, or the
Setback, could be anything.
Setbacks, or whatever. As long as it's related to the use, of which we have single-family, then that's still in the spirit of, and supporting the master plan's recommendation. That's a separate, that is not a conflict at all. And so going back to your point, that's why we have on our agendas, I mean, have the agenda cover sheet, but other business. And if the Planning Commission ever has those ideas and suggestions, that's the time where you bring it up and have a discussion, and then that's something that I would then present, or we would present to the supervisor, indicating that there is an interest by the Planning Commission to pursue a request. Or it can come from a private property owner, of which then the supervisor will evaluate the request, and then sometimes seek a direction from the Township Board of Trustees, or may elicit a directive to pursue it.
At the time, I didn't want to be the one, because it would appear like self-serving, but it's a valid point that could have happened anywhere. But again, that's separate from tonight. So I, after that comprehensive presentation, I agree with the three points, obviously, that it's relevant, and it should continue, and we accept. That's my opinion. I mean, I'm sure there's going to have to be a motion, but those are just a few comments.
Thank you.
Andrea, did you have something?
I think it's great how the Parks and Recreation's incorporated into that. Obviously, it's part of the master plan that can be focused on. It sounds like it's going to come up in the future. But it's very thorough to me. I support the, what's recommended to be considered here.
Any other come-ups?
First of all, I just want to say, I want to say there's a very thorough and comprehensive review of the master plan. And I look at it as the master plan is a macro look from outer space of the township, whereas the micro plan, the things you were talking about, is specific ordinances and things like that. That's micro. This is a macro look at the township. I think this is a terrific review.
Good. Thank you.
And a lot of department contribution. I mean, congratulations. Thank you for doing such a thorough job.
And I think that's the value of, we do have a very active involvement in our reviews. At every department head meeting, I thank the various departments, because they contribute to our reports. And even though it comes to you in many pages, but the whole intent is, it's very thorough and comprehensive, and that engagement makes for a better project, and obviously, a better community. So I'll share that at the next meeting.
All right, well, we need a motion to, or not, to approve the, to send this on to the Board of Trustees, to accept the report, and then send it on to the Board of Trustees.
Is it a three-item motion, like you have to mention?
I'll go ahead.
Yes, you just follow that, sure. Do you want to take it, Richie?
No, I just wanted to know if we needed separate motions.
They're listed right there with those three. So I'd like to move to recommend that the Planning Commission approves the master plan update as amended, along with the attached implementation tables, to accept the five-year review, confirm, hang on, I'm trying to go after it. I think that it confirms that after five years, the goals, objectives, and strategies are still relevant, and that the principles of the plan are still pertinent with the state of the township. Am I missing anything?
No, that was perfect.
Okay.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded? Any discussion in the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was five.
All right, great.
Put it on.
Thank you very much.
I just want to make one correction from the beginning of the meeting about the minutes. I said there was a minute of June 20th, that's what's on my screen. It's the minutes of October 3rd. That's all. So for anybody listening, for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Minutes of October 3rd were what was approved.
Great.
Okay, anything, general business, any items not on the agenda, anybody wants to bring up?
Well, I have a quick question. And this isn't necessarily a new item, but it is a little different. You know how Patty in Birmingham, there's a lot of controversy over, what is the word? Like perimeter type of neighborhoods, or mixed use? Is that where it's like business, that people are living on top?
Right.
Fixed use? Is that what the, do we have that?
We do, actually. Yes, and at the time, we have a MX district, which is called the Mixed Use District. And it's identified at key, five key intersections in the township. And back in 2007, this was when there was a lot of development occurring, that there was also an interest in having multiple-use development. So maybe it was a service use, or a restaurant use, retail use, then office and residential. And in fact, part of it was because we had an interest at Big Beaver and Woodward, at the southeast corner. Frank Simon wanted to build a building to meet those standards. And there were some benefits of pursuing the MX district, because you could go a little bit higher, you didn't have, your setbacks could be a little modified, your parking could be shared. I mean, there were some benefits, pardon me?
Incentives?
Incentives, good word. Incentives to pursue that type of review. Well, then unfortunately, the economy changed, circumstances changed, and those residential units that were on that third floor ended up turning into office. And so, and that ended a result in, we never end up having a mixed-use development coming out of our MX district. No one has actually pursued that at this time. We'll see.
Okay, I thought maybe the property that's at Squirrel and South Boulevard fit that bill, but that's something totally different.
Yes, a little different. That was multiple uses, but not necessarily one building having mixed uses. So it was just more of the nature of the development. But in the spirit of it, that was part of the importance of the master plan amendment in 2018, was, well, how do you deal with that retail service commercial, when it wasn't located at the corner necessarily, it was actually a former bank, but the zoning was off? And then how do you get that residential to be that buffer before you get to single-family? It wasn't laying out as it should with the product that was being presented. So I think at the end of the day, it was served well by that plan.
I agree.
So as a result of that, did we actually change the zoning map after that was approved?
Yes.
So was that the last time the zoning map was amended?
The last time was for the Valvoline.
Oh, because it went from B2 to B3?
Yes.
That fits the plan, especially up there.
Mm-hmm. A good question.
I have one thing I'd like to, it's very appropriate, actually, and it was here, I didn't want to bring it up during your discussion, but on page 39, the second item, says, "Examine ways to assure installation, maintenance, and replacement of trees in right-of-way." Now, that, in the right-of-way means it's not part of a building, well, if someone builds something and tears down trees on their property, there's the tree ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. The right-of-way is owned by the county.
Correct.
How does the township play into that? What does that mean? Could you explain, it's very appropriate to me, in our situation in Westchester Village right now, and I saw that, and I'd like to get an explanation of what that means.
Well, Andrea, part of, well, part of it is, in fact, I'm thinking about a residential project already, where when we request that they provide to us a landscape plan, and then oftentimes, it's depending on where our Safety Path program is, whether there's a safety path that's adjacent to a prescribed development or not. And then what occurs outside of that right-of-way, you're absolutely right, it's required by the Road Commission. But we have, through things such as our natural beauty But we have, you know, through things such as our natural beauty roads or communication that we have through the road commission engineers, being able to talk about, you know, what type of vegetation may be presented as we work through the property owner. But you're absolutely right, we don't have any authority, but it's having those conversations. We don't necessarily have those, but-
We have the right, I'm sorry, we do have, I'll come up-
Yeah, please.
I'll be yelling from the audience. So we do have the right-of-way disruption permit that we work with the clerk's office and that, what that does is at least provides us an opportunity anytime that there's any utilities or any structures that they're looking to install into the right-of-way. Granted, you're right, we don't have the overall authority to determine what is permitted within the right-of-way, but it is our opportunity to review and to be able to respond if we see something or there was something that was, you know, something that was very important to the township or it gives us an opportunity to review that, any disruption to the right-of-way. So we do have that.
We have, we've gone through that process.
Yep, and that's, and that's on top, but that's above and beyond the county right-of-way.
And they have, they have the disruption right-of-way permit as well.
Yeah.
You have to do both.
And I, and I think to kind of, to kind of go along kind of with Patty's saying is just, I think the importance of it in the master plan is just identifying that our right-of-ways are very important to us despite the fact that we may not have direct ownership or ability to determine what occurs in them. But I think, like Patty said, the ongoing relationship and the expectation, I think, through the county is that they understand how our expectations, you know, or our hopes, not to say that they're going to exactly be, you know, implemented-
Right.
But the communication and the, in the, the objective and the importance to the township, that gives us an opportunity at least to open the discussion.
Okay, so it's a discussion, it doesn't mean that the township would physically do something there, they would just have a discussion of what could be done.
And the road commission on an annual basis does reach out to the township and prescribes their expected program, programming of what, what areas that they're going to be looking at making improvements throughout the Oakland County and then what segment might fall in Bloomfield Township and if we have anything to contribute. And oftentimes, it's, it's trying to coordinate if we're putting in a sewer and they're wanting to put in a sidewalk, or we're putting a sidewalk and they, they're wanting to do some other improvement, whether it's sewer related or not, we want to make sure that we're coordinating time and effort and disruption and not, you know, putting in a brand-new sidewalk and then two months later, they're coming in and ripping it out. So, you know, there is that communication. And I think, again, through the supervisor's office and DPW and engineering, you know, they stay connected to those agencies, both out of necessity, but also because the collaboration has proven really helpful. It's like, for example, on Long Lake Road where there's improvements with sewer utilities, but then there's also a water, water main, a utility break that they had to repair and that there were some structural issues with some of the underground utilities. Well, then it's how do you coordinate those improvements when you have three or four agencies kind of all in one defined area? And so it, it does work and obviously trying to be the least disruptive to our residents is, you know, our top priority other than safety.
Anybody else have anything not on the agenda? Well, then-
Okay.
We can get a motion to adjourn?
So.
It's moved?
Second.
We adjourned.
Second, good, great.
Thank you.
Good to-